Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. I think this will be our last central planning until after the 7th of May. And quite possibly no central planning until June after the 7th of May. I see a couple of heads being nodded there. Anyway, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. There are no, the usual housekeeping, no plans for a fire alarm test this evening, so that if you do hear a continuously ringing bell, something might be burning somewhere in the building and we should leave as quickly as possible by the green marked exit, one on the corner there, one directly opposite me and one to my right here. We gather under the canopy outside Wayne Troes. Members and members of the public, could you please switch your mobile phones to silent or off? And members, we are being webcast, so if you could be sure that your cards are plugged in and speak not too close to the microphone, otherwise it gets a bit noisy. So moving on to the agenda itself, item one, the minutes they've been on the table over there for the last half hour or so of our meeting of the 11th of March, is it your wish that I sign them as a correct record? Thank you very much. Apologies for absence, Fiona.
Thank you, Chairman. I've had apologies from councillors Bryn Morgan, Adam Taylor-Smith, Jane Thompson, Simon Thornton, Andrew Wilson and Liz Wheatley.
Thank you very much. declarations of interest?
None received.
Any late declarations, members? Sorry. Any relevant updates to government guidance or legislation since the last meeting? I think, Elizabeth, you would like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Members, there have been some changes to government guidance and legislation since the last meeting. In the interest of brevity, I shall identify the main headlines and I am in the process of preparing an update summary with relevant links for all members of the area committees, which we shall circulate shortly. I can confirm that where the relevant changes have been taken into account in the reports, updates and officers' assessments this evening, so you can guarantee that anything that has changed, we have informed our reports with those changes. Firstly, the General Permitted Development Order, which is the order which contains the permitted development and prior approval rules, has been revamped and consolidated and there have been new provisions for permitted development. The Development Management Procedure Order, which is the legislation controlling validation, assessment, determination of applications, has also been revamped and consolidated. And as I mentioned to you at your last meeting, importantly statutory consultations have changed from that order and Surrey County Council has now become the statutory consultee for surface water flooding and SUD schemes. That's for applications submitted after the 15th of April. There's been a new procedure for the discharging of conditions introduced and the environmental impact assessment regulations have also been amended and the thresholds for the requirement for EIA screening have been raised. The National Planning Policy Guidance has also been amended in respect of planning infrastructure contributions, SUDs and EIA to reflect those changes. And there's also been the introduction of new national technical space standards to which our reports do refer. Importantly, we can only give limited weight to these standards at the moment, we're including them as a matter of guidance, but we can only give limited weight to them as an authority until they are actually adopted through planning policy. So they're the main changes and as I say, I will be incorporating those changes into a note with the relevant links and members will be able to come back to me if you wish with any comments on that. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Moving on then to item six and applications for planning permission. Item A1, WA 2014/1435, the erection of a two-storey extension and alterations following demolition of existing lean-to at One River House Cottages, The Green Elstead, as amended by plans received on the 9th of December 2014. Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the application is the erection of a two-storey extension and alterations following the demolition of the existing lean-to at One River House Cottages on the Green in Elstead. Here we have a location plan showing the application site located around, on the Green in Elstead Village. Here we have some existing plans and an artist impression of what the two-storey extension would look like. It's a forward projecting two-story extension as indicated on the screen here. So this is your before and this is the artist impression. Here we have some photographs showing the host property as indicated on the screen next to a much larger property of which they were in an individual ownership some time ago. This was a farmhouse and this was a barn-type connection to that farmhouse. This has undergone some extensions in the past. Here we have some photographs showing views from around the proposed property and a view looking backwards from inside in Inner Court. Then we have a view facing east and a view from River House over to the...
Chair, I'm afraid you could have the lights down for him next, that's straight to the centre.
I should start my little trip through the photographs again. So here we have a view of the property from the Green, the host property which was a farmhouse and the, or the original large property which was a farmhouse and this connecting property which is subject to the application which was a barn, some cow shed addition in the past. This has been subject to extensions over time. Here we have a view of the host property from the south-west of the site, a view of the front elevation and a view of the rear elevation from the courtyard. And here we have a view facing east and then a view from River House, which is the larger of the two properties. Here we have a roof plan, I'm afraid they haven't come out, well, they're not too bad on your screen. Here we have a roof plan showing the extension here in two-story with a geometrically shaped roof on top. So here we have the plans in more detail at ground floor and at first floor. The maximum depth of this projection is about 5.8 metres with a width of 5.79 metres at ground floor and at first floor where there's an overhang, it extends to about 6.4 metres at width. We have floor areas on the ground floor of about 21 square metres and on the first floor of about 29 square metres. Here we have the proposed elevations in plan form, showing the roof design projecting forward and the finial detail of the roof projecting above the ridge line of the host dwelling. Here we have a summary of the dimensions of the proposal, saying the ground floor maximum depth 5.8, the first floor at 6.4, that is to allow for that overhang. Going now to the determining issues, matters of principal technical judgment, looking at highway considerations and parking, the proposed property would go to a four-bedroom property and would only have two parking spaces. This is slightly less than the parking guidelines of 2.5 spaces, but given the context of the site and given that this is not a new dwelling, it is an extension to a dwelling, it would be difficult to refuse on this issue alone. Looking at the archaeological impact, we see no archaeological issues associated with the application. Now moving on to the right-hand side of the screen, matters of judgment. The application site is located in a conservation area and both the application property and the host and the larger property are undesignated heritage assets. Now looking at the undesignated heritage assets, members will be aware of the framework where it tells us that we have a duty to protect those undesignated heritage assets and officers have sought the advice from our Historic Buildings Officers and they consider that the proposed design is acceptable and would not have undue harm to those assets or there would be no harm. Now this is a matter of judgment for members, it is a design matter, it is subjective and that's why it's on the right-hand side of your screen. Looking now at impact on visual amenity of Elstead Conservation Area, members will be aware of section 72 of the Planning Listed Buildings Conservation Areas Act where we're told to have special regard to the preservation and enhancement of the conservation area. Again, we have sought the advice of our Historic Buildings Officer and they are content that the scheme would preserve that character, but again, it is on the right-hand side of your screen and it is a matter of judgment. Looking now at impact on Green Belt and rural settlement, although the application site is within the rural settlement of Elstead, it is a washed-over settlement and therefore is in the Green Belt. As such, paragraph 189 of the framework comes into play, which tells us that you are allowed to extend a building as long as it's not in a disproportionate way. Now members will be aware that when we're talking of extensions to properties outside of settlements, we look at a figure of around a 40% extension. Now there's no doubt about it that this extension is greater than 40%, but given that it's in the context of Elstead Village, we look at it in a more contextual view to see whether it's disproportionate and officers consider that, given the context of the village, that this would not be a disproportionate addition or have a detrimental impact on the rural settlement of Elstead. The application site is within the area of outstanding natural beauty, members will be aware of section 85 of the Countryside Rights Away Act that tell us we have a duty to preserve the natural beauty of the area. Officers consider that the natural beauty would be maintained given the context of the site. Now looking at impact on residential amenity, officers do not consider, given that, officers do not consider that this site would have an overbearing, overlooking or overshadowing impact so as to warrant a refusal. Now members will recall that this application first came to committee in February, I think, when the applicant, or third-party objectors obtained council's opinion with regards to how the officers had addressed historic building concerns. Now, the main, the main issues brought out of that legal opinion were the impact of the proposal on Green Belt and the disproportionate nature of the extension. Now, this has now been covered in the officer's report where officers have assessed the proposal in context of what's around it and do not consider it to be disproportionate. Council's opinion raised concern with regards to the assessment of significance. Members may be aware that paragraphs 128, 129 of the framework require an assessment of the significance of the heritage asset, be they designated or undesigned, is arrived at before you then go on to assess whether a proposal would cause any harm. Now in this instance, officers consider that the significance of the heritage asset is found in the layout of the historic properties around the village green, properties of architectural merit in and of themselves, and we do not consider, in line with advice from our Historic Buildings Officer, that this proposal would have a harmful impact on the significance of the conservation area or the significance of the main dwelling next door to the property and therefore we think we, where officers conclude that we pass the tests in the framework. If I now take you to your update sheet. Following changes to government legislation, the Development Management Procedure Order has now been altered and in your report I think we refer to article 11, that should now read article 35. We've had a consultation response from the county archaeologist and that, given the only relatively small amount of new ground disturbance, no archaeological concerns are raised. The applicant has agreed for a time extension until the 28th of April 2015 to allow for a decision to be made and with regards to additional information, we have had a letter from the agent confirming that, or stating that the applicant has rights of parking over a metre strip of land that is located just to the side of the application site. Now, following the issuing of the update sheet, we've had confirmation back from the neighbours of the property and it would appear that there is some dispute with regards to who has rights of parking in that area, but that is not necessarily a matter for consideration this evening, that's a private matter between landowners. So taking now to the recommendation and the recommendation is as remains set out on page 21 of the agenda, which is a planning permission be approved, subject to conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Barry. We have three speakers. Firstly, Mr. Ling. Mr. Ling, I believe you have been advised, you have three minutes, two minutes with a green light and then the yellow light comes up and after the last 30 seconds, you have the red light and I will give you an opportunity for the last couple of sentences to wind up before I have to cut you off. When you're ready.
The officers have determined that the building should be viewed as an undesignated heritage asset within the conservation area. The key question here is significance. In the eyes of the village, it is very significant and together with the wall mentioned in heritage features of Waverley forms the backdrop to the village green. The local authority has an obligation under paragraph 72 of the Planning Listed Building Conservation Act 1990 to pay special regard to preserve and enhance a conservation area and we are advised that the court set the bar very high in this regard. A substantial forward projecting extension of unusual design discordant with the conservation area conflicts with this obligation. Under sections 133 and 134 of the NPPF, the council is obliged to protect such assets from harm or loss unless the council can show a public benefit which outweighs such harm or loss. The residents of the Green are unanimous in their opinion that this proposal is harmful and detrimental and does not provide any public benefit. The council members would have seen from their own site visit that this application relates to a small village cottage, not a Georgian-style townhouse. The Green is surrounded by historical listed village houses and modest dwellings developed in sympathy with the conservation area. The extension has been designed to be visually prominent in the street scene and will create a noisy addition at odds with the surrounding properties. The extension does not comply with any of the council's own guidelines on two-story front extensions and has been designed in a flamboyant, high Victorian style that sits at odds with the original buildings and group. It is not the same or similar to the existing cottage and will dominate and obscure it. When the council has conducted the site visit, the original officer's report cited the extension as a depth of 3.6 metres, now amended to 5.8, measured from the first floor, the extension actually projects 6.5 metres. The extension will cause substantial harm to the building and its setting. The property's had significant extension in 1979 and we're advised that the result of these extensions represents a 66% increase on the original building as it stood in 1968 and in excess of 80% compared with 1948. There's undoubtedly substantial and significant disproportionate addition over and above the original building, which is contrary to paragraph 89 of the NPPF and we are advised therefore inappropriate development in the Green Belt and by definition harmful under paragraphs 87 and 88 and therefore should not be approved. There are 28 letters of objection, the majority of them from the Elstead residents and 12 from the people who live around the Green and next door and will see this development every day. Conversely, there are 11 supporting letters, one lives in Elstead, five don't even live in the UK and one is the architect himself. So we respectively ask the councils to listen to the views of the Elstead residents and parish council in rejecting this application.
Thank you very much, Mr. Ling.
Thanks, Mr. Ling. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ling. Next, we have Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm the chairman of Elstead Parish Council and I'm here tonight to outline the council's objections to this application and these objections were adopted unanimously by the council. I should point out that the parish council doesn't normally oppose plans for parishioners' extensions to dwellings in the village and it only does so where there are strong and compelling objections based on sound planning grounds and indeed, I think in my 16 years experience on the councils, this is the first time that we've sent a representative here to speak on these such occasions, so that indicates the importance to be attached to this decision tonight. We believe that there are indeed compelling reasons for this application to be refused. We oppose the application on the grounds of the size of the proposed development, its scale in relation to the existing dwelling and its design. Taken together, these features would clearly conflict with the Elstead Village design statement. Specifically paragraph 5.2, which deals with the maintenance of space in front of buildings and the maintenance of patterns of roof scape, and also paragraph 10.3, which deals with the design of extensions. Now I don't think the council officers have given sufficient weight to the village design statement, which has a status of supplementary planning guidance and therefore needs to be taken fully into account. Here it is. If you look at the front page, you'll see that the building shown on the front cover is River House and this is the one adjoining the planning application site, River Cottage. This, I would suggest, is an indication of the visual importance of this complex of buildings in maintaining the essential characteristics of the conservation area around the village green. The proposed extension to River Cottage would have a major and adverse impact on the visual amenity around the Green. It is a two-story structure, large in relation to the existing building, extending nearly six and a half metres in front of the building line. Its hexagonal design on the first floor is quite out of keeping with the existing vernacular architecture. It is for these reasons that the council, with regret, feels that it must continue strongly to oppose this application. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Murphy. And finally, Mr. Edwards.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Central Area Planning Committee, good evening. I've read the two reports, the original one and the amended one, and I had prepared a statement to provide for you. I feel that the two additions of the report actually cover the points far better than I would have done. And really what I want to do really is to simply thank the Waverley officers for the extent of patience and consideration they've given to this project. We naturally agree with the sentiments presented. We worked very hard with members of the planning and conservation team and we're very, very happy with this solution. The design guide, the village strategy design guide, we followed with great interest and it does provide architects with an excellent opportunity to do something really worthwhile for the village and this is what we feel we've done. We're very concerned to see that from an early stage, a furor has grown up, we don't really understand why because we know what we do and we know that we really generate a good quality work mainly on listed buildings and in conservation areas, so we are slightly surprised here. But I think that's what I want to say this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Edwards. Could you switch the microphone off, please? It's the big button nearest to you. Thank you. Members?
Thank you very much, Chairman. As Ward councillor, I'll go first and hopefully we'll get a debate going on this. I am of the mind not to agree with our officers, I have to say, straight away, so I'm interested to hear what my colleagues feel about this. We're told in our papers that the application complies in all respects with policies RD1, HE8, C3, D1 and D4. RD1 relates to development in rural areas and it states the council will only permit appropriate development which is well-related in scale to the existing development and which takes account of local building style and heritage of the settlement. I don't see this here. HE8 relates to conservation areas and states this seeks to preserve or enhance the character ensuring the design is in harmony with the characteristic form of the area and surrounding buildings in terms of scale, height, layout, design, building style and materials. I don't see this here either. It also states to ensure the design is in harmony with the characteristic form of the area and surrounding buildings in terms of scale, height, layout and design. I do not believe this proposal ensures any of these criteria. HE8 also states we should be protecting open spaces and views important to the character and setting of the area, that would be the village green in this case. This development will not preserve the view from any angle. C3 relates to the AOMB and the AGLV and seeks to protect and conserve the character of the area. With the loss of the modest appearance of this riverside cottage, the character is not just lost, it is entirely altered. D1 relates to environmental implications. Again, the paper tells us this development would preserve the character of the Elstead Conservation Area. The property is described as an undesignated heritage asset within the conservation area. D1 seeks to avoid harm to the visual character and distinctiveness of a locality in respect of the design and scale of the development and its relationship to its surroundings. The design and scale of the proposed extension could not be further from the visual character and distinctiveness of the properties surrounding Elstead Village Green. Policy also states it should seek to secure a good standard of amenity for all existing and future occupants of land and buildings. This cannot be achieved for a four-bedroom house with only two parking spaces in the small front garden, which is further greatly reduced by this extension. Visitors will certainly have to park elsewhere, only adding to the congestion which has already become a serious problem around the village green. D4 relates to design and states development should be a high-quality design, something which may well be the case, which integrates well within the site, which I believe is certainly not the case. It should be appropriate to the site in terms of scale, height and appearance, I don't think this is the case either. The first floor overhangs the ground floor and is therefore much larger than the ground floor and would be the street scene feature. The ground floor is screened by a high wall, this extends 6.5 metres from the front of the cottage and is nearly six metres wide. D4 also tells us that development should not significantly harm the amenities of occupiers of neighbouring properties by way of overlooking or have an overbearing appearance for occupiers of neighbouring properties. This extension would be a discordant feature within the street scene, entirely changing the appearance of a modest country dwelling and its appearance is purposely designed to be overbearing and to dominate the existing dwelling. On the site visit, it was apparent that this proposal will certainly have an overbearing appearance from all angles. It is designed to be noticed. So it's hard to understand why the officers have given their support to this application when it's so glaringly at odds with our own local plan. And to sum up, if I may read, Chairman, just... This is from the Residential Extension Supplementary Planning Document, October 2010, and it says, "In general, two-story extensions at the front of the property are unlikely to be acceptable as they are often visually prominent and intrusive within the street scene." Remember, this has been designed to be visually prominent. "If proposed, it should take the form of the existing building and the proposal should not normally extend beyond the front elevation by more than two metres." This extends nearly six and a half metres. So extending from the front by six and a half metres, this proposal is designed to be visually prominent and intrusive within the street scene and it certainly does not take on the form of the existing building. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I do have some reservations about this, it's quite interesting. I've now lived in Elstead for two years and I've never really noticed this cottage in all of those two years, which I think rather says it all because the Green is a pretty set piece and this cottage is just sort of fitted in with all the other houses that are there. And I think this addition, extension is going to be very different. Now taken in isolation, I actually, I don't dislike the addition, but I don't think it belongs on this particular house. If that cottage was on its own somewhere else, probably not in a nice street scene or not certainly in a sort of around... or not certainly in a sort of around a village green, I would possibly have a different view of it. But I think because of where it is, I don't think the design is in keeping with the houses that are around and opposite and on every sort of corner of the green. I think it looks rather bulky, especially given it's adding to us a fairly small cottage and the fact that it's on the front of it and of course the prominent position in which it is. So I think, as I said, I do have reservations about it. I don't think it's... While it's a pretty design in some ways, I don't think it's the best design for this particular house in its location. I think a better solution may and could come if this is not allowed. It might not be to the... It might be not what the occupiers want, but unfortunately, you know, they bought a cottage, which is a very old cottage in a very prominent place, attached to another very prominent house. And I think whatever is designed here needs to be sympathetic and I just don't actually think this one is entirely sympathetic.
Thank you very much. Mr Taylor Smith.
Thank you. I can see why this proposal is dividing opinion. It's an unusual design, it's perhaps an unexpected design. It's not a safe design, it's maybe not what you're expecting in that location. But I think we need to judge what's in front of us. Really, the determining issues here are subjective. I think there are two things, really the impact on the neighbours and River House, I think it's called, and secondly, how the design sits in the area. Taking the first of those, the impact on River House and the amenity of the next-door neighbour, I don't see, and having visited the site, I don't see that there is going to be a significant impact on the next-door neighbour from this proposal. I think the officers are right in concluding that. Looking at the design, which I think is probably the more marmite issue here, it's not best dish. It's... I think the local member said it's designed to be noticed. Well, I think I agree with that, it's noticeable. I personally, my view on that design, find it high-quality, I find it interesting, I find it would be entirely appropriate in that location in terms of its scale and its design. It's an unusual front elevation extension, but it's high-quality in its effect and the architect is well-known to this committee as an architect who does a lot of things locally and a lot of his designs are unusual and they've been implemented well and they look great when they're done and they maybe are not what you're expecting when they come for you, but actually the end result is entirely appropriate and great in other instances. But we're judging this in front of us. I tend to agree with the heritage officer. I can't see that this would have an impact or adverse impact on the scene around it and the buildings next door to it in particular. I don't find it too big and I don't find it overbearing in the context. Therefore, I'm supportive of our officers' view on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. Much has been said already, so therefore I will not repeat things, particularly those that were raised by our first two speakers and councillor Els. They actually reflect the things that I was reading in the report before I came here. So I was very conscious that the parish council stated quite clearly the proposal does not comply with the Elstead Village Design Statement. There were 28 letters of objection. Very few of those points were actually emotional, the others were straight fact, I thought. And we have on page 14, the officers comment that it does not appear intrusive or unduly prominent. Now, my feeling is that it is overly prominent. And then finally, officers are satisfied that the proposed form of the extension falls within the intentions of the design statement. However, our parish council do not feel that. And I've got to say that if the Elstead Village Design Statement is meant to be taken seriously, then we should take it seriously, otherwise we can throw it away. And I believe that it's very important, that particular point is of the greatest significance for me. One other thing, may I just ask how many bedrooms the current building is, Barry, please? Because we know we're going up to four beds.
It's three at the moment.
Thank you very much. So there was certainly scope for increased vehicle activity and I think the point that there's two definite parking spaces and another which is sort of uncertain because of ownership aspects means necessarily that there will be an increase in vehicles and I do not believe this site can properly cope with that and still leave residential amenity for the members of that house. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr Lee. Mrs Cable.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I have to say that I've agreed with bits of what most speakers have said. I mean, Adam Taylor Smith referred to it being interesting and I think this design is extremely interesting and I'm sure it is a very good design. But what concerns me here, as many people have said, is that I think it's going to be over-dominant. I think that it is not the appropriate design for this particular place. I'm not going to repeat what other people have said, but I will just say that I did spend an hour and a half or more canvassing all round the green and it certainly came home to me then that I think this particular design will just not be appropriate in that place. I have great sympathy for this growing family and I hope that they, if this isn't granted, that they can do something, but I think they've got to take into consideration that next-door, they've got a very elegant house and they do need to look around at what else is there. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. Mr Martin.
Thank you. I find this a very tricky application to consider. I think for me, the context is the conservation area, but of course, conservation areas are not museum pieces and they need to... Buildings within them need to grow and adapt and change, of course, within the context of the conservation area. Clearly, this design and this extension is radical. It is indeed designed to be noticed. I rather think it's the sort of design that a lot of people will object to now, but in 40 or 50 years' time may reflect that it's a terrific place. Who knows? It's a very judgmental thing. On the other hand, I do have to listen to the views of residents. It's their village and they have designed their own sort of view of what things should look like in the village. So I think for me, this is really very difficult. I quite like the design, I quite like a quirky design. I think for the moment, I'm probably going to come down in favour of going with the officers' recommendation, but I do understand the objections to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr Martin.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a question really of officers. Much has been said this evening about the Village Design Statement and the weight that that should have in our considerations. I just wonder if officers could comment on that, please? Excuse me. As to what sort of weight that should carry and what weight it carries as things stand at the moment?
It is a document that carries weight in the decision-making process. It doesn't have to be slavishly followed, it's to inform design and used as a guidance, but it does carry weight and it is of reasonable weight in the process.
Chairman, just to add to that, it has been adopted by the council as a material planning consideration. Thank you very much.
If I could come back. Thank you. There's possibly a sort of split opinion on the committee and should the committee be minded to go against officers' recommendations and refuse, sort of based on the grounds of the Village Design Statement and the loss of the impact of the street scene, the loss of the unlisted heritage asset? What in the officers' opinion is the likely scenario should the application go to appeal? And are we on a... Is that a comfortably sustainable position or are we in difficulty and costs and so on? I'd just like to get a steer before we actually get to the point at which we make a decision.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It is a matter of judgment, it is a matter of design, whether you think the design is commensurate with the conservation area and then if you think it is, then you have to decide whether you think, if it isn't, does it cause no harm, does it cause lesser substantial harm or does it cause substantial harm? But it is a matter of judgment, it is a design matter and that is a judgment matter, subjective.
Mrs Cable.
Thank you for letting me come back. I mean, I think that's a very interesting point, but I just think I'm getting the general view here that our opinions are very mixed and I'm sure because it is so, for me, a matter of subjective judgment, inspectors would be very similar. So I would say that you could weigh it up like this, whether an inspector would agree or disagree with us. It will just be whoever the inspector is.
Thank you very much. I'm still looking at the screen here and with respect to the owners of River House cottages, I would say the existing property is fairly basic, fairly nondescript and this actually puts it on the village map, I believe. I don't find it outlandish. I do find the proposal interesting and looking again at that screen on the top right-hand side, I don't believe, apart from the fact that it projects forward from the existing property, that it overpowers River House, which I think is the property next door, either. I have the feeling, you know, if this was granted planning permission, in 10 years' time, this will probably be looked upon as a heritage asset. However, that may be for future residents of Elstead rather than those that live there now. Anyway, if there are no further speakers, members, perhaps we can go then to the officers' recommendation, which I can probably find here on page 21. Subject to the conditions listed on the agenda, the officers' recommendation is that permission be granted. Can I see those members in favour of that recommendation, please? And those against?
That was four in favour and five against.
So we don't go with the officers then? Has anybody got an alternative recommendation? Mr Reynolds.
Well, I'd be very happy for councillor Els to add to this, but certainly the design is out of keeping with the street scene amounting to that's certainly the major one for me. Possibly that it's slightly over-development on that particular site, but I think I'd leave it to councillor Els and maybe the officers to come up with others.
Mrs Els, would you like to throw in a few more?
I think it's over-development. It's... I don't know whether you feel there's any mileage in that and it is overbearing. I mean, I've given my reasons, I think that there's plenty in here, that it goes against so many of these policies and so I'm sure that we could cherry pick any number of them, surely. And also, what about the community benefit? Do we have... Can we demonstrate that there's harm to an undesignated heritage asset? Can we possibly look at that and see whether there is no community benefit to outweigh that harm? Is that...
Elizabeth.
Thank you, Chairman. I think that you do need to ask yourself in finding harm and bear in mind what Barry did alert you to before, that you need to decide, does it cause substantial harm, less than substantial harm or no harm? And I think you've indicated it does cause harm, so perhaps before you make your final decision, you can have a debate about whether you think it causes substantial harm or less than substantial harm because the tests that follow are different for both of those two expressions. But in both cases, before you make your final conclusion, you need to ask yourselves, do the benefits of the proposal outweigh that harm, whatever degree of harm it is? So picking up your point, I suggest if you have decided there are benefits to the proposal and that might be, for example, the benefit to the applicant of having more space, perhaps of altering the property to bring it up in terms of its level of alteration or what other benefits you may consider there to be with it, but the test would be for you to conclude that the harm you've identified does outweigh those benefits. So I hope that's answered that question, but perhaps, Chairman, we could ask members to decide if the harm is substantial or less than substantial. Thank you.
Well, another harm, I feel, is the parking situation. Well, it would be as far as Elstead is concerned because we really do have a very serious and we have a very serious parking problem, very, very close to the site. And it will mean there's two parking spaces there. I think it is to be proved yet that the extra parking space that has been used is not actually being legally used, but there will be two parking spaces and in a four-bedroom house, surely that's harmful.
Mrs Cable.
Do you want to finish this debate because I've got a completely new point to make? Should I... It was just purely, is it worth mentioning the Elstead Village Design Statement?
I think in summary, we can suggest some words for reason for refusal to pick up on everything else that's been said and I'll read that out in a moment. And that will include conflict with all the policies that have been raised and the NPPF policies and the Elstead Village Design Statement. But critical to your reason for refusal is this issue, is it substantial harm, was it less than substantial harm?
Thanks. I think we're scraping a few barrels here. Parking, I don't think we can sustain a two parking spaces in a four-bedroom property is substantial. I think answering Elizabeth's point, is it harm or substantial harm or less than substantial harm? I think a diminutive property and a small extension to that property, it'd be hard to say that's a significant harm, therefore it's less than substantial harm, I think is where we probably realistically could go on this if you're going to perform an objection of some sort.
If all the committee agreed on that, then, Chairman, on that conclusion, then can I suggest some words for a reason for refusal?
Mr Reynolds would like to come back.
No, no, I was going to say, yes, I think it's less than substantial harm and I don't think we can bring in the parking at all because, you know, to add one extra bedroom to a three-bedroom house and suggest that suddenly you're going to get three or four other people parking there, I don't think it's something we could substantiate. I mean, it wasn't that long ago that our parking guidelines from Surrey County Council were to... For a four-bedroom house, so I don't think we could go along with that.
Barry, you wanted to come in or are you leaving it to Elizabeth?
Thank you, Chairman. We suggest the following wording. "The proposal, by virtue of its size, scale, design and form, would appear prominent, over-dominant and out of keeping with the existing building and street scene and consequently would fail to preserve or enhance the character and appearance of the conservation area, would cause less than significant harm to the conservation area as a designated heritage asset and the undesignated heritage asset. The proposal would therefore conflict with policies D1, D4, RD1, HE8 and C3 of the Waverley Borough Local Plan 2002, policies within the NPPF and the Elstead Village Design Statement." Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Elizabeth. Is the committee comfortable with those reasons for refusal? I see heads nodding. Okay then, for those reasons, permission is refused. Can we take a vote on the proposed refusal? Those in favour of refusal then, please. Those in favour of refusal, then, please?
Five.
Those against?
Four.
The application is refused. Moving on then to item B1, W2015.
Mass Exodus, very rude, but there you go. Mass Exodus, very rude, but there you go.
Yeah. All that rumbling over there in the background. Not exactly hurrying, are they? They aren't exactly hurrying. Mind you, they're all pretty orderly. Okay. Item B1, W2015, stroke zero zero eight three. The erection of three dwellings and associated works following the demolition of existing dwelling and outbuilding at 139 George Road, Godling, as amended following receipt of revised plans on the ninth of March, 2015. Peter.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, this application seeks permission for the demolition of the existing bungalow and outbuilding on site and its replacement with free dwellings at 139 George Road. The site is located on a corner plot at the junction of George Road and Bourne Road. You see it on screen now, outlined in red. It's currently occupied by a bungalow. This first shot shows the frontage of the site. You'll see beyond, there's two-story semi-detached properties and a brick wall to the front and side elevation of the property. This is another view down the street, looking at the side of the property. Again, that prominent wall on the frontage. This is Bourne Road here. You've got some cars parked along this street, which I understand are regularly parked there, associated with the existing residential properties, many of which don't benefit from on-site parking. So the area is fairly mixed in character, but the majority of the properties surrounding the site are two stories in height. So what's proposed, the design of the dwellings designer dwellings are proposed to match the appearance of properties existing in George Road. You'll see similar design features on plot one and two of those existing properties on George Road. Bay windows designs, proportions matching those existing. The ridge and eaves height you'll see is slightly below those existing. That's to reduce its height as it joins the junction with Bourne Road. Plot three is proposed as more as an addition to these properties, so it doesn't interrupt the character and uniformity of the frontage along George Road at this point. It's also designed, you'll see, so it has a frontage to both streets. And that's shown here. So the main entrance to the site will actually be on the side of the property from Bourne Road. Just scroll back to the layout. In terms of the general layout, generally sighted in line with existing properties, parking provision is made to the rear, and that will be access from Bourne Road. We have seven parking spaces provided. This meets the council's guidance in terms of parking provision. You'll see in general layout, plots one and two have park, sorry, garden areas to the rear. And this plan's not completely clear, but this dark area here indicates cycle storage, and an area for bin storage is also shown within the site. Plot three has some garden area to the side, front, and a little to the rear. We've considered the garden areas, and they are slightly smaller than other properties, but on balance, we don't think it's going to have significant harm to future occupants. This scheme does follow a previously refused application for four dwellings. Give me one minute, I'll just scroll through. For four dwellings, you'll see on the left-hand side, this was a refused scheme last year. And this elevation here shows the frontage with George Road. You'll see the properties were sat so they fronted Bourne Road rather than George Road. They're very large, and you can see the comparison. We've got significantly reduced scale of development, and officers now feel this proposal overcomes the previous reasons for refusal, which related to design, loss of amenity from overlooking in this direction. There was insufficient parking provided, and at that time there's contributions to planning infrastructure, but that has fallen aside given recent changes. So determining issues, I've just gone through the planning history, and there is some differences with this proposal. Officers feel it's much more suited for the area. The highway and parking provisions are acceptable. Parking provision meets our guidance, and the means of access onto Bourne Road is also considered to be acceptable with suitable visibility displays, and the county highway authority have confirmed it's acceptable. Bin storage provision is made within the rear gardens, and that's also considered to be appropriate and meets the required standard for space. So the matters of judgment, the impact on visual amenity. Officers consider that the proposed scheme is in keeping with the character of the area. It doesn't harm the appearance of the street scene, and the reduced height of plot three ensures that that plot doesn't appear too prominent in the street scene. Impact on residential amenity. We have had some letters of objection from neighbouring properties concerned of overlooking, but given the layout of the site, front and rear windows overlook the front and rear gardens respectively. Side windows are proposed, but these are to be obscure glazed, where they face onto the adjacent flank elevation of a neighbouring property. The general layout is considered to be acceptable. The parking to the rear does reduce the garden areas, but on balance, we think that's an acceptable amount of provision for all of the properties. This last point here, room sizes. The government have published guidance on minimum room sizes for residential properties. This scheme does, it meets the overall requirement for four space, but the bedroom sizes do fall slightly below the minimum standards. Again, this is a guidance document. It's not an adopted policy. And we've taken a view that on balance, the room sizes aren't so small as to harm amenity for future occupants. So on that basis, we've made a balanced view, and we think that's acceptable. Just take you now to the update report. There's an update on page thirty-six, Barry previously set out. There's a change in the Development Management Procedure Order, and we should now be referring to Article thirty-five. There's a couple of updates to the report as well. Corrections, update to page twenty-five, principal elevation should be referred to on line nine. Spelling error there. And at paragraph five, it should refer to the council's adopted parking guidance rather than standards. And there's an amended condition also. We've recently had an updated Town and Country Planning Act, Town and Country General Permit to Development Order, and the date referred to should be 2015, as you'll see in the update. Condition two also refers to the old order on page thirty-seven of your report. And I'm afraid it's not in the update, but on verbal update, that should refer to 2015 also. So on the basis of those two revised conditions, the recommendation is that permission be granted subject to conditions one to twelve, subject to two being amended, on pages thirty-seven to thirty-nine of the agenda, and the revised condition thirteen included within this update. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much, Peter. Mr Reynolds.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, this is a vast improvement on the previous scheme, which was really frankly a very bizarre-looking four-bedroom design, which was really cramming onto a site which sits currently, you know, a single, small bungalow. I think this is, if anything, perhaps veering a little bit on the over-development of the site, but I don't think it's quite sufficiently so for me to have an objection. I take your note about the bedroom sizes being perhaps a bit smaller than they could be, but in fact they do seem to all have cupboards already in, so at least the storage isn't going to be compromised. I think the slightly smaller gardens isn't necessarily a problem, because a lot of people aren't wanting big gardens. The most important thing is the parking provision is there, and there'll be sufficient parking for the houses, which I think is the main thing, in my opinion. I think it is in keeping with the street scene. As I said, vastly better than the previous one. I'm glad it's houses rather than a big block of flats, so I think I'd be happy to go with the officers on this one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs Cable.
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, I basically have no problems with this whatsoever, but the one thing I'd just like reassurance, can somebody explain to me the measurements of those car park spaces? Because I went and had a look at the site today, and I just find it quite difficult to know exactly how you're going to get the seven in there, and they're going to be usable.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, we've had a look at these, and we have minimum measurements within the parking guidance for open parking, and these meet the minimum requirements, so you'll be able to park four vehicles side by side here and end to end within that area. County highways have looked at it, and they think there's sufficient space in this area for a vehicle to reverse and turn and exit the site in a forward gear. It isn't the largest area of site, but they have viewed it and they think that's acceptable. And again, the actual spaces meet the minimum standard for an open car parking space.
Barry, it's as though you anticipate some sort of comments on parking. Well, I know that the standards that we have to go on, so I can't argue on that. I just make the personal observation that end-on parking isn't a practical situation, so there will be cars, extra cars, out on the road. And councillor Cable mentioned about the sort of manoeuvrability, and there is far too much dependence on people's goodwill one to another. So it doesn't make a major contribution to a healthy environment. I just observe that. I'd like to think that we were in a position to stop the rot, as it were, rather than sort of continue with decisions that are going to continue to make things worse, traffic-wise and so on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr Martin.
On the subject of parking, at the moment, I was actually out canvassing George Road last night. But none of the houses, or very, very few of the houses, have any parking at the moment. So this is a considerable improvement for George Road. And I mean, actually, from end-on end-on parking, actually, if you have effectively a single-track drive, which many properties do, and you put two cars on that drive, they are end-on. And it's no significant difference to this. It just happens to be in an open space, not on a specific drive. If you park in front of your wife and your wife wants to go out, then you both have to move your car. I mean, that's life in these sorts of spaces. So I don't really foresee there to be any significant problem. And actually, to provide three properties and have off-street parking in George Road is actually very good. So I'm very much in favour of this.
Mr Lee.
No, I won't be difficult. No, no. I understand councillor Martin's comments there. And probably therefore, husbands and wives, whatever partners, will park end-on to end. That's simply because the roads are so fully clogged with cars anyway, and there won't be any parking spaces on the road. Thank you.
Any other speakers? No? Let's go to page thirty-seven of the agenda. The officer's recommendation is that permission be granted, subject to the amended condition two, with that nineteen ninety-five changed to two thousand and fifteen, and an addition amendments to condition thirteen. Can I see those members in favour of the recommendation, please? Looks like it's unanimous. Permission is granted. And I think, members? Oops, sorry. We are at the end of the meeting. Mr Taylor Smith?
It's my last ever council meeting, and I just wanted to say I just wanted to say how it's been a real pleasure having such professional and knowledgeable officers, and they've been a delight over the last twelve years. And also actually having such sensible members of the committee. I think Central is the best planning committee in the whole of Waverley, because we are such sensible people. Thank you.
I must reiterate exactly what Adam says. I won't kiss you anymore.
Mr Martin.
I'm not planning on leaving. I might be, okay? But I'd just like to say I shall miss the company of Adam Taylor Smith and Liz Cable very much from this committee, and I wish them well for their future post-retirement from being a borough councillor.
Thank you very much. And could I just round this girding of the lily up by saying, members, I have done three years as your chairman. It has been a pleasure, and I really do appreciate all your support over those past three years. Thank you very much. And furthermore, I really do appreciate the support of our officers as well. I think they have been absolutely brilliant. And then, of course, committee services on my right here, Fiona. Thank you very much. Enjoy the break. And have a safe journey home. Thank you.